We start right at 5:30, but I wish when I walked in with all my kids and grandkids, they would be this quiet all of a sudden. That would be great. I'm honored to call the city council meeting for January 23rd, 2019 to order. At this time, we do our moment of silence, and I'd like to have us all think about the individuals that are, first of all, the public work staff that are out there in the cold doing their phenomenal work, our first responders, police and fire, our ambulance folks that are doing their work, but also think of all the individuals that may not have as warm of a home or warm of a coat, and all of us as we try to manipulate through the cold. Let's think about all of them and how they're important to all of us, no matter what their situation or what their job, especially we think about them even more in this time when it's cold outside. With that, a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Alderman Clul, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Clul. Brian, would you please call the roll, please?
Clul.
Present.
Mattson.
Here.
And Dunn.
Here.
Ten present, your honor.
Thank you very much. You know, as we again want to wish you a good evening and as we begin this meeting of our city council, I would again like to welcome all of those in attendance and also those who are viewing the meeting on television or on the internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We're happy that you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask you to turn off or silence your cell phones and other electronic handheld devices as they can interfere with the audio system and be disruptive here in the chambers. If you wish to address the council on a specific item on a discussion agenda, you are encouraged to do so during that discussion item. You will have an opportunity to address the city council under public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself, and introduce and speak to the council as a body and not to any single individual member. We will ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So again, thank you very much for being here. Will and Alderman move approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of January 9? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. Is there a city administrator update this evening?
Nothing this evening, your honor.
Thank you very much. Will and Alderman move approval of the report of the committee of the whole for January 16th, 2019? Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. We have some appointments and some presentations this evening. First of all, we want to have some new appointments on a variety of our, some commissions, boards, as an example, two commissions and one of the boards. First of all, under affirmative action, affirmative action advisory commission, Robert Zeldorff is a reappointment. Under the design review board, Jeff Bass is a new appointment, Joe Cooper is a new appointment, Zachary Howell is a reappointment, Jose Solero is a new appointment, Kalissa Warden is a new appointment, and for the riverfront improvement commission, Ryan Reed is a new appointment. I'd ask all of those, first of all, if you're here to stand up for a minute, any of you that might happen to be here this evening, I know there's a number of you. First of all, we want to thank all of those that have served in the past, and thank all of you for making a commitment to be involved in your city government. With that, I wanted everybody to see you and see the work that you've done, and thank you for being involved. Will and Alderman move the appointments?
Make them.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Thank you and congratulations for your commitment to being with the city. Thank you. Let's give them a round of applause. Our next item, this is another one of the great things I get to do. We're going to be swearing in three new firefighters this evening in the ceremony, so why don't I meet Chief Carlston up in front, and we'll begin that process.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. As the mayor said, this is truly a proud moment of a fire chief's career when he gets to introduce the new members of his organization. First one I'd like to introduce today is Will Shorg. Will was born and raised in Quad Cities where he graduated from Bettendorf High School. After high school, he enlisted in the U.S. Air Force as an aerospace mechanic and was part of Operation Enduring Freedom and Iraqi Freedom while stationed in Turkey and Germany. He was on the 2005 all-air force soccer team and is active in the Quad City soccer community. Will has his firefighter one and firefighter two certifications, and is nationally registered as a paramedic. He spends his free time riding his bikes with his two daughters, Jocelyn and Daphne. Will's wife of 10 years, Chelsea, will be pinning his badge.
First of all, thank you for your service. Secondly, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Will Shorg.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Our next firefighter is Jim Swanson. Jim was born and raised in Davenport, Iowa. He attended West High School. After graduation, he attended the University of Iowa where he earned a bachelor's degree in economics. In his spare time, he enjoys hiking, playing guitar, spending time with his family. He has a one five-month-old daughter, Darby, and his wife, Morgan, will be pinning his badge.
Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jim Swanson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
I get to hold the baby. Oh, no, no, I get to hold the baby. We've already, we've already met.
And our next firefighter, we have Matthew Kindlesberger. Matthew grew up in Parkview, Iowa. He attended North Scott High School where he graduated in 2008. After high school, he continued his education at Scott Community College where he earned an associate's degree, and Western Illinois University where he earned his bachelor's degree in business management. Matt is currently working on testing for his firefighter one and firefighter two certifications, and he is working on getting his EMTB license reinstated. He enjoys weightlifting, outdoor activities such as deck hockey, flag football, hockey, running, and spending time with his family. He has two boys, Rico and Ollie. His fiancee, Cassandra Lee, will be pinning his badge.
I state your name.
I, Matt Kindlesberger.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter as required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I think we're going to have a picture of all the commandant staff get up with the new officers, so if you want to come up. Who else we got? There you go. Come on up, Chief. Come on up in front here. We'll get up together. Just push you in there. We'll put you guys in front. We'll go in the back. But he's coming over here to get a better angle.
I don't know if there's.
Yeah.
Can Chief Bickford just smile one last? Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Chief Bickford. Chief Bickford. Well, you know, this is, we want to make sure Chief Bickford was here for a variety of reasons. One, I know he's always enjoyed, and it's been a blessing for him to be able to swear in new firefighters, and that's important. But it's also, I think this is actually will be his last city council meeting. He's retiring after a 40-year career, and I could go on for a long time, and I know he loves being involved in this spotlight, so I'm not going to do that. But talking about a legacy of leadership, I've gotten to know him personally, but through a variety of issues in my tenure as mayor, I am honored to call him a friend. I'm proud to have him represent our city as a firefighter and as a chief, and we just want to thank him for all the years of services he's provided. And I think Chief Carlston wants to say something also. Well, we have a short video here that we're going to go ahead. Let's see that first. Stay right over here. Let's make sure everybody can see it. What are you doing? Unsaid goodbyes and severed ties, songs unsung, but all the places you'll go.
So, back in late 1978, I got a call and said, hey, do you still want to be a Davenport firefighter? And I said, sure. And it's been 40 years, and I will tell you that, I don't know who else can say, after 40 years doing what you're doing, you still feel like you won the lottery. It's that great of a job and that great of a career, so thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Sorry, I got a few words.
You go first.
I think we all know Chief Bickford's a very humble man, so I have a few words just to kind of tell you a little bit what he's done, what he's meant to the fire department over the years. Chief James Bickford has been a part of the Davenport Fire Department for almost 40 years. That's more than a quarter of the time the Davenport Fire Department has existed as a career fire department. During this time, Chief Bickford has been instrumental in the overall operations of the department. Some of the examples of service include, he was one of the original members of our Davenport Fire Department hazmat team. He's been part of various committees within the fire department and the city, committees like the station location study of Station 5 and Station 8 back in the early 1990s, and he's been a key member of the department's safety committee meeting for many, many years. He's overseen various fire department remodels and capital improvement projects for the fire department, including the most recent Central Station project. He's been responsible for managing our department fleet maintenance and replacement program, and he's always been ready to help lend a helping hand and has spent a vast portion of his career taking care of other firefighters. From traveling to Oklahoma City after the bombings in 1995 to participate in debriefings of fellow responders, to working several shifts in Clinton Fire here earlier this month in their time of need, Chief Bickford truly demonstrates the meaning of brotherhood within the fire service. Jim has spent more than a third of his career as a chief officer, with the last decade and a half being as operations chief. And he has also led this department on two different occasions as interim fire chief for the Davenport Fire Department. These are just a few of Chief Jim Bickford's career accomplishments, but some of his greatest joys have been found at home with his wife, Lori, his daughter, Elizabeth, and his son, Colin. Jim and Lori's hard work ethic, personal values, and commitment have been installed in their children, and I know Jim is very proud to be a husband and a father, and proud of all their accomplishments. Rest assured, we will miss Chief Jim Bickford's presence in the firehouse, but we are all very happy for him as he begins his new adventure. Over the years, Jim has been a strong leader, a mentor to many, and we are very grateful for that. But most of all, he's been a great friend. Thank you, chief. Congratulations. This is a great team, and just wanted to bring this out for you. We have a special City of Davenport clock, and I want you to do one little remembrance. You've got a lot of wonderful things and wonderful memories. We wanted to give you this as well. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You very well.
Again, thank you, and we have two presentations this evening. Our second one is a local business, special one that we have, and I want to read that. And we've been honoring and recognizing local businesses that are truly the foundation of our community. In 1986, Charlie and Jody Crispin purchased the first commercial popcorn popper. In the spring of 1987, the Crispins were invited to sell popcorn at the sixth grade circus fundraiser at Adams Elementary School. This led to the purchase of a snow cone machine and further participation in fun nights at many schools. Soon a cotton candy machine, as well additional popcorn and snow cone machines, made their way into the Crispins' collection. One of Charlie's coworkers at Mount Joy Caterpillar Plant began calling him Popcorn Charlie, and the name stuck. The Ann Company was added to include Charlie's wife, Judy, two sons, and friends and family who helped out with the family's newfound hobby. In the spring of 1988, the addition of a replica antique fire wagon, a wagon was added to Charlie's growing collection, and the wagon was used for many local, large local events. In January 1989, Charlie had received news that popcorn shop in Moline was for sale. The Crispins purchased the equipment and officially opened their first storefront located at Five Points in April 3rd, 1989. The now full-pled business expanded in June of 1995 to its present location at 3601 North Division Street in Davenport. Popcorn Charlie employs seven people throughout most of the year, but then in November and December, the holidays bring staffing levels up to 15. Popcorn Charlie has become a mainstay for special events, birthdays, family parties, youth activities, business and organization recognitions, promotional programs, picnics, and community enjoyment. Popcorn Charlie is that hometown family and kid center. You know, when I was a kid, there was that candy store down the street where you could get candy for, buy one piece at a time, then it was for a penny or five cents, but that's still, that atmosphere is still there, where you can still pick out candy that may not be able to find anywhere else but at Popcorn Charlie's. So thank you, Charlie and Popcorn Charlie, for your 30 years of fantastic customer service, as well as your continued contribution to the economic growth and hometown flavor for Davenport, Iowa. Popcorn Charlie is another wonderful example of one of Davenport's local businesses that are the foundation of community. So tonight, accepting the recognition is Charles Crispin, his son John, and grandsons Aiden and Brendan. If they want to come up, we'll make the presentation.
I'm honored to present this. It's a brick as a foundational thing, a relic to what you do for our community. It reads, "Local Business, the Foundation of Our Community, Recognizing the Unique Businesses of Davenport, Iowa. Popcorn Charlie &amp; Company, January 2019." Congratulations, your honor. Let me look up, and we'll all get our official statements. Couple of guys come over here.
Come over here. One over here.
One get on this side. Jump in here next to grandpa. Thank you. Anything you want to say? Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Okay, now we're going to move on to any petitions or communications from council members and myself, and we're going to start with our community engagement chair, Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, your honor. Just several, a few things tonight. Just wanted to let everybody know the application period for Davenport Citizens Academy is now open, and it continues from February 22nd. Beginning in late March, academy students will meet once a week on Monday nights for an evening session of tours, lectures, and hands-on learning in how Davenport government works. They get an overview of the functions of most of the city departments and meet many people leading these initiatives. Details can be found on the City of Davenport website, so if you're interested, I encourage you to please go ahead and apply. It does require an application. Next, during the cold weather, utility bills can take a bite out of everyone's budget. There is a program that we wanted to let people know about at Community Action of Eastern Iowa. People at 175% of the federal poverty level living in non-subsidized housing, owned or rented, may be eligible for assistance with their utility bills. Those annual income limits are $21,245 for a single person, $43,925 for a family of four. The number for the Scott County office is 866-324-3236, and again, that's Community Action of Eastern Iowa, so if you know anybody who might be helped through this, please let them know. And the last thing I wanted to mention is, there's an exciting exhibit opening tomorrow, or opening this week, and Race: How Are We So Different exhibit at the Putnam Museum opens January 26th. It explores how we experience, we've experienced race through history, how the attitude towards race impacts our everyday lives, and how science looks at race. Promises to be a thought-provoking experience, so I hope you can attend that while it's here. Thank you so much, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, we're going to move into our agenda for the night, the rest of our agenda. We have one individual approval item on our discussion agenda this evening. It is a second consideration ordinance for case number REZ 18-16, request of Rob Davis with Busch Construction to rezone 5.93 acres more or less of property located north of 58th Street and east of Utica Ridge Road from CO Office Shop District to R 5M Medium Density Residential District. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this? Whoops. Okay. If you would, please, your name and address or ward, please.
My name is Lynn Gibson. I'm representing Busch Construction. We're the developer of that property. I don't need a lot of your time. Just very briefly, if you recall the presentation last week, we have some options. Our first option with approval of the rezoning request would be a four-story, 62-unit building placed on the southwest corner of the property, creating as much green space as we're able on the other side between us and the Crow Valley Villas neighborhood. We believe that has the least amount of impact, but height remains a concern, and for that reason, we, you asked last week if we were willing to put some restrictions on the height going forward, and on green space, remaining green space. No additional buildings on the site. I wanted to let you know that we've had, started internal discussions and started discussions with legal counsel to put that into place, should it happen that way. If the rezoning were to occur and that were to be part of it, we've started that process. We've also had continued conversations with Alderman Clul about those ideas and his concerns, and actually have a meeting scheduled next week with Matt Flynn and our office to keep that moving forward. The other two options were to remain the commercial transitional, allowing 35 feet, allowing three stories. One option would be to still do a residential project there, which was allowed, but do two buildings and increase the density to 90 units or so. And then the third option, were it the rezoning to not go forward and it remain commercial, we would use it as a commercial lot, which is another option, which would be multiple buildings up to 35 feet, and again, due to city code likely, parking spaces for 350. So, update-wise, is we're moving forward on the restrictions if that remains something that the council would like to discuss.
Thank you for moving forward with that, getting some more information. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this? Anybody from council? Is there a motion then to, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Clul?
Thank you, Mayor. I hate to belabor this with the council. I know that you've heard me opine on this a number of times, but I think it's important to continue to keep you abreast because things are changing. As the council knows, I will not support an RM5 RMF because of the possibility that this would be seventy-foot. Bush is not planning to build over four-story, but anybody who was to purchase the property, should Bush not go forward, would be able then to build a seventy-foot. Not tenable, in my estimation. I would not vote for a straight RM5 RMF. So, where are we today? We have the alternatives that Lynn has mentioned. I'm continuing to work with the community in terms of what they will accept. My personal opinion is that four stories is the least disruptive to the neighborhood. It leaves half of the green space there that would otherwise be taken up by a second, three-story building. It also reduces congestion because, talking about sixty units versus ninety, thirty additional units would be a considerable amount of additional traffic out in that area. At this point, up until a couple of days ago, I've not been able to make that stick with the Villas people. They've been pretty much agunit. They don't like the idea of the four-story, what they call a monstrosity or monolith out there. However, another potential covenant has come up, and that would be the third that we, I believe, Lynn, that we're probably thirty-foot off of Utica Ridge at this point. The third covenant would be that if Bush would be willing to push that back another twenty-five feet, so making it fifty-five feet off of Utica Ridge. I believe that both the Lakehurst and the Crow Valley residents would be satisfied with that alternative. I can't say a hundred percent, I'm still working with Crow Valley. But I think that is an alternative that would be preferable. So I just want to let the council know where the community is at at this point and where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp.
I just wanted to thank Alderman Clul for the work that he's put into this because I think in this particular rezoning, the neighborhood does have options, and I think Alderman Clul has worked very hard to lay out those options to the neighborhood, to developer, and to the developer, and say, if these are your options, which would you prefer? And what can we do to make this a project that'll work for the neighborhoods? I really appreciate that. I still agree with you on the height, Alderman Clul, and I'm assuming what you're asking is that we continue this on to continue the discussion, noting that we will only have one more cycle to make that decision. Otherwise, we would have to table it. So I would be in agreement to continue to let Alderman Clul work on this and see if a compromise can be reached to make it palatable for everyone.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp, and again, I want to thank you also, Alderman Clul, for your help. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, I just kind of want to say what Alderman Gripp said, but thanks for your work. But I'm willing to make a motion to put a restriction on for the, you know, the speed, so it doesn't go to seventy, if you're okay with that, but I'll let it go tonight, and you tell me if you guys want that. But I'm happy to do that if you want that. Thank you.
Alderman Clul.
I thank my fellow Alderman. At this point, what I would like to do is I would like to let the deliberation process continue with the residents, and I would hope that by next cycle, I will be willing to make the motion. I do appreciate your cooperation.
Thank you all, and again, I wanted to clarify, normally before the discussion, there is a move to consideration, and Alderman Ambrose did make the motion to move the second consideration, so, second, huh? There was a second, yes, it was Alderman Dickman. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussions, seeing none? Brian, would you call the roll on the second consideration of this ordinance?
McGinnis?
No.
Clul?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
And Gripp?
Yes.
Eight yeses and two noes. I'm sorry, nine yeses and one no, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Now we have approval of all items on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to that effect? It's been moved and multiply second. Roll call, please.
Clul?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, and now we're going to move to, if there's any public other, first of all, are there any other ordinance resolutions or motions this evening? Seeing none, is there any public with business? Again, we would ask that you limit your comments to five, no more than five minutes. And actually, seeing no one, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Adjourned.